And he, my dad actually hasn't done it yet.
Good evening. It is, uh, six o'clock or pretty darned close to it. I would like to, uh, call the regular meeting of the South Daytona City Council to order. It's Tuesday, July 10th, 2018. If I could get a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Young, Councilwoman Long.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Neil, Councilman Shoner.
Here.
Mayor Hall.
Here.
Mr. Simpson.
Here.
Mr. Yarborough.
President. If everyone would please join me, Mr. Yarborough, with a pledge of allegiance and all of my implications, please.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Dear heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to bless this community, this country. We ask that you help us love our neighbor. And dear heavenly Father, we ask that you help this council in the deliberation to make this a better kingdom for you here on earth. In thy name, amen.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of June 12th, 2018. Ralph, can you second it for me?
I'm sorry, second.
Thanks. We're, we're short up here.
A little housekeeping, take care of a little here.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, this is item six on the agenda, citizens to be heard, comments on any issue or agenda item. This is the time where any citizen in the audience would like to get up and speak about anything that's on your mind, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda. What is it, Scott? We talk about anything in the world that you'd like to discuss?
Universe.
Universe. Please feel free to come up to the podium and, uh, talk to us. Good evening.
My name is Kathy Baker. I live at 1930 South Bridgewood Avenue, like six South Dayton. I have been to the zoning people and, uh, across the hall. Uh, it has been five weeks and I can't seem to get this problem fixed. We have a fence that is blocking my satellite dish because it's falling down. And I've been to the commission, they've been out to the house, they said they're working on it. I know it takes time, but five weeks is a long time to wait for you to be able to watch TV that you're paying for. And I just didn't know if you guys could help me or not because...
I'm about to lost your ad, I started with your address and I lost you, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. We have a fence that does not belong to the property.
What is that address again?
Oh, it's 1930 South Bridgewood Avenue.
Thank you.
We have a fence that's not, our property, it belongs to the people that own the sprinkler system or whatever that's up for sale, the property that goes all the way back. Their fence is coming down. It's blocking my satellite dish, which I paid for, I didn't mind. Now during the hurricanes, I never lost signal with my dish until that fence came down. Now if it rains, I lose signal. And I've been to, across the hall, they've been out to the house, they said they're working on it. It's been five weeks.
Uh-huh.
I don't know if y'all can help me or not. It's just out of bed, the paper's on and you can't watch it.
Well, we will, you talked into the code enforcement's boss here, building department's boss.
Yeah, let me, and I usually don't engage, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will. These are civil issues, probably the fence has been signed, the property owner's been signed. You'll notice many times when you end up having to take it to the magistrate, it's not criminal, so there's not immediate anything we can, Florida statutes are slow with regard to this, but I think we, I'll look into it in the morning, see where we are and somebody will be back in touch with you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak about anything that's on the agenda, not on the agenda, in the world? I don't want to leave anybody out. Seeing as hearing none, I'll bring it back to the diocese. Um, I see we have a presentation of a check from Charlene Greer, Executive Board Director of Jeep Beach Inc. Charlene, is that you smiling there?
That is.
Please, come on.
As well as the board members.
I like it.
We're gonna have to put our smile on for this, right?
Charlene, you wanna, you wanna tell us about Jeep Beach?
Sure. So Jeep Beach is the annual event where we have all of the Jeeps in town from, we've heard now, from Flagler all the way down to Edgewater. Um, this year we were able to raise over $300,000 for forty-something charities and we are presenting checks to the South Daytona Community Trust as well as South Daytona Cert. Where Andrew is at?
Andy's hiding in the back.
There you go. Um, and so we wanted to come tonight and present the check to, to the mayor and as well as the rest of the council.
Would you mind doing that, right? Picture for the...
Want us to take that or?
We'll come to you, you might have given us money, we'll come to you.
We appreciate all that you do and support of JB.
I'll walk further than this.
As well as for the community. Nice to meet you. Together, but if you're closer, that'd be great.
It's nice to see.
Trying to put that aside.
Uh, why? Uh, move. Ralph, a good looking one. We gotta be in the...
Good couple, make sure we get a good one.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
All right.
And before you leave, I understand you have one for, for...
We did not have, we don't have a big check with us tonight. I didn't know that Andrew was...
But you have the...
But we do have the...
And that will spend, right?
This one, actually, we can take that and I can see what they say. I like that big one. For more. Thank you so much. Thank you for your support, we appreciate it.
That is impressive.
Thank you, thank you. We continue setting, setting the goals for us. So thank you.
Charlene, you gonna watch that guy there, sitting there, right?
Absolutely, I got him.
That's pretty impressive. I, I know that, Charlene, before you leave, I know that there is a Jeep event, uh, in the planning stages here in South Daytona. I believe it's September...
I actually saw that email today.
September 27th, so we would, we'd appreciate if y'all could come down.
We will absolutely be a part of it.
Have a limited date with us or something and...
Absolutely.
It'd be awesome. I believe it's gonna be the Sunset Park Mall.
Yep. We gotta confirm it all, yeah. We'll be here.
And if you have any extra parts, there's a gray one sitting outside. Can always use some more.
We do have our JB 19 stickers, so all you Jeepers, make sure you get your stickers from us. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Could we write something like that there? Boy, that's what exactly what I was thinking.
It's nice. And number seven, city manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I start off with something that's pretty, pretty neat and it's my honor to make that presentation. The mayor attended an advanced, attended, excuse me, the advanced institute for elected officials on the west coast that's put on by the Florida Legal City University. You have to first finish the initial institute training session in order to be able to go to the advanced, that's the name. It's seventeen hours of long and hard sessions, two days, and, um, if you pass the course, they want to recognize you. I'm not gonna take the time, Mr. Mayor, to read this letter, but, uh, it's, it's very nice for Ms. Tipton, who's the, Lynn Tipton, who incidentally is the director of the institute, who is the former city manager's daughter, Howard Tipton, Daytona, for any of you that not go back that far, she works for the Legal City. She's a very smart lady, I've been through many of her classes, she always, she's always very interested in it, it's amazing what she knows about municipal law, municipal charters in cities in the state of Florida. But that being said, um, I'd like to make this presentation to you, Mr. Mayor, it's a certificate of completion for April 27th and 28th in Canton, Florida. Presented to you by Mayor William Bill Hall, City of South Daytona. It's worthy of praying. I could take these off, there you go.
Perfect.
I submitted to each one of you late this afternoon and it was on your diocese area, an item I would like to ask you to consider under new business to seek. It would be the school board's funding agreement for a school resource officer at the South Daytona Elementary School where they're agreeing to participate. There, we didn't get it till literally after lunch and, um, I thought because of its timeliness, that we'll be taking it up here and if they do lie aboard me, it'd be nice if we could give them executive copy before they change their mind. Pretty, I think it's pretty lucrative, uh, agreement. So if there's no objections, that will be your last item of the agenda, Mr. Mayor, I'm just getting unscheduled items. Some real good news, this afternoon, the rec and race board agreed to fund the $50,000 toward the improvements for, um, Jane Street Park. If you recall, that night it would be levers for a third act threat, a local match, and then for, and echoes, well hopefully $200,000 for lighting, scoreboards and fencing that we need for the park.
Yeah, we didn't get any. We're really in place though.
I think that's correct.
Crazy.
And it was in your budget, I was glad to be able to report. It did really well today, $50,000 in checks, all in one day. Lastly, uh, I want to remind you that your next council meeting is August the 14th. We have a budget workshop planned for 5:00 PM and at the end of the workshop, we'll get with, uh, John, I mean, convene for your council meeting. And that's all I have to report.
What day was that, Joe? I'm sorry, 14th?
14th, yeah, 5:00 PM. Council meeting will begin after that. Usually it's, it takes an hour to put the orders together.
City attorney's report.
Nothing to report, sir.
Brings us to old business, Scott, if you would, by, uh, by title only, if you could, eighteen dash zero five.
Ordinance number eighteen dash zero five, by title only, for second and final reading. An ordinance of the city of South Daytona, Florida, amending the official zoning map by changing the zoning of 3201 South Nova Road from light industrial to planned commercial development, ECD, providing for repeal of ordinances and conflicts here with, providing for several building, providing an effective date.
Need a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Yarborough?
Been a while, we asked, the last time that this was before you had passed our first reading, we had sent it back and it was a request regarding a site plan that I believe has been accommodated coupled with a development agreement that you needed to see. And both of those are in your agenda packet. Um, I see you have, uh, the, uh, this here has counsel, legal counsel here with Storch, and I'm sure he would like to address any of the questions you may have on this issue. You also have a public here. This is the, um, the Godawa, uh, recycling facility, uh, on Nova Road, across the road from Reaching Out Park, pretty much. Everybody knows where that is. They're trying to get legal with their, um, recycling operation.
This is a public hearing, if anybody in the public that's present here tonight would like to get up and speak for or against ordinance eighteen dash zero five, now is your opportunity. If you would, say your name, please.
For the record, my name is Glenn Storch. Uh, I represent the advocate in this case. And the, you know, I have to say, one of the nice things about South Daytona is that this is a city that tries to solve problems and find solutions for the problems. In this case, there was a, you know, this is an existing use that had been there for quite some time under a light industrial zoning. Uh, there have been some problems, mainly with the dirt on roads, a couple of things. So what we did is we worked together, solved, and we did that by creating a contract, a PUD, between the city and the advocate as to exactly how we'll solve it and what we'll do. And so that PUD now will replace the light industrial zoning. This will be a PUD zoning, the, um, the MDA, you see the master development agreement you see in your, in your, um, packet, will now reveal all the land as far as what can be done and how it can be done in this case. When all staff's concerns have been resolved, uh, we agreed to the context or the, uh, solutions that, that came up that they weren't equipped as own. Uh, we have a staff recommendation approval, we have a planning board recommendation approval, and hopefully we'll have your approval. But we are here to say that we are staying in the city, we are looking forward to working in the city for years to come, and thank you very much for working together to solve this problem. And, and I should say one more thing. You know, I was on vacation at your last meeting and you worked with my associate to deal with the big, uh, new project on Riverfront. I greatly appreciate you taking care of him.
He did fine.
He did too, uh, for...
He did well.
We're good. Thank you so much.
We just questioned why he stood up and spoke when everything was going so smoothly.
I'll ask the question.
You sure you want to?
That's an instinct that comes with time.
Yeah.
So if there's any questions, obviously, you have the advocate here who can answer any questions, but I think you've done a good job of working together with staff.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak for or against ordinance eighteen dash zero five? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Any further comments?
No, just, I think it's a good plan and they addressed all our concerns, so we appreciate that.
I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Scott, if you would, eighteen dash ten, please.
Ordinance number eighteen dash ten, by title only, for second and final reading. An ordinance of the city council, city of South Daytona, Florida, amending Article Three, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 3.1, definitions, to provide a definition of establishment, dealing, and alcoholic beverages, and amending Section 3.2, hours of sale, amending the hours of operation for establishments dealing in alcoholic beverages to 12:00 AM, providing for an extended hours operations permit for establishments dealing in alcoholic beverages between midnight and 2:00 AM, providing for conditions for issuance of a per, of permit, renewals, suspension, and revocation, providing for severalability, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
Need a motion, please?
Second.
All right. What you're doing is your second and final reading, public hearing thrown in that is identifying a, uh, liquor sales after 12 o'clock, midnight. It says if you're gonna sell liquor in the city from 12 to 2, you need for those extra two hours to have an inspection of the business and to, uh, have a special permit. If you violate the conditions, I mean, too much noise or, uh, too much lights, too much gathering in the parking lot or failing to close it to, you'll get cited, you'll be before the magistrate, and your license can be revoked. Once you sign up, the prosecutor every year will send you a renewal, it's up to you not to take it. It's not to be on you, it's, it's just simply recognizing that a state law you sell midnight, anything after that's on us, and we don't want to be out there babysitting. Okay? Um, I think it's a good ordinance, it was recommended to, uh, to staff, uh, the chief who, uh, understood similarly one, who, in Ford Orange, when he was chief there, now thank you for that, we plagiarized his law. You have any questions, I'm for Scott, the chief, I can answer.
This is a public hearing, if there's anybody in the audience tonight that would like to speak for or against ordinance eighteen dash ten, now is your opportunity to, to Seeing as hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council. We've, we've notified, but we will notify...
Yeah, we're, we're... Same notice as that, same view, uh, all the time.
We're talking half a dozen businesses, right?
From...
Sir?
About eighteen of nineteen of them.
Really?
All of them. Yeah, but we're only talking about those that happy to stay unopened until Tuesday. That was the question, wasn't it?
Well, jury, my name, please chief, uh, we will take one, we'll hand deliver a packet to each business in town that serves alcohol, every single one of them, and then it's for them to declare whether or not they intend to stay open at any time during the year. But you're right, it's gonna be about five or six.
They currently do it.
Right, right. Time for change.
Sure. Can you... Just on clear, the noise ordinance, if there's some continuous calls and services...
It was blamed into this, absolutely.
Yes, I like it.
That's your next comment?
Yeah, the, um, the enforcement mechanism is through the special magistrate, so if we have code violations that occur out there, the special magistrate's authority is to review this after-hours permit, which is one of the penalties they can...
And the after-hours permit is not necessarily coupled with their primary?
No.
Yeah.
Um, that would be business tax residency, and state law gives them the right to operate alcohol till midnight anyway, and then it would be warranted the revocation of the overall business license, business tax residency, that would be a different issue, but this, we're only talking about operating between alcoholic sale, alcohol, sale of alcoholic beverages between midnight and two.
But that's consumption, right? Am I right in that's right?
Yeah.
It's not a package store.
No.
Just consumption.
Yes.
Seems reasonable to me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Scott, if you would, eighteen dash eleven, please.
Ordinance number eighteen dash eleven, by title only, for second and final reading. An ordinance of the city council, city of South Daytona, Florida, amending Chapter Ten, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article Two, noise and outdoor lighting, of the city code of ordinances in Section 5.6, P5Y, and 5.6, P9, of the city's land development regulations to adopt new noise regulations, providing for severalability, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
I need a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
And this is a public hearing, I'm sorry, Mr. Yarborough.
Uh, what you're doing here is the second kind of reading of your, this becomes law, and it's basically an update. Scott spent a lot of time, the city attorney spent a lot of time in preparing with input and staff. Um, it doesn't go away with the desk for reading, it adjusts some hours of operations. It does give a little bit more discretion to our police officers, audible, you know, um, and it tries to bring it up to code. I know that, uh, Scott, you, Daytona's updated ordinance in part, it can choose, and Scott, if I'm leaving something out, please jump in.
I'm sure it'll be pretty good.
It's not wholesale changes by any means. It has been, we've, it's been a long time since a noise ordinance has been reviewed.
This is a public hearing, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against ordinance eighteen dash eleven, now is your opportunity, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the, uh, to the council. Any comments?
I just can say, it's, uh, I think Scott did a good job, it's very detailed, it makes it very clear and helps the policemen know what to expect and also our residents as far as, I guess, SS noise, which we have complained about.
I'm good with it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Statutory business, Resolution eighteen dash sixteen. Resolution number eighteen dash sixteen, by title only, for person only reading. Resolution, city of South Daytona, Florida, establishing an preliminary antelope tax rate of 7.8 mils per $1,000 of taxable valuation, representing a four, a point four four eight mil or 6.09 percent increase above the rollback rate of 7.3520 mils, as certified by the Belushi County Property Appraiser, in order to support the city's annual operating and capital budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2018, and ending September 30th, 2019, and providing an effective date.
I need a motion, please?
Second.
What you're doing with this is setting preliminary, and you can lower it, you cannot increase it to the super majority or something like that, which never has happened. Um, we have to have something to develop your budget on, which all of you have spent time individually, with finance directors themselves, all of you viewing. Uh, and it's balanced upon the 7.8 mils. Um, in comparison, if you adopted the rollback rate, it'd be about a $24 increase. Uh, if you adopt this, it's about a $50 average increase, property owners a year. Um, it is, we are recommending this rate, uh, to assist in, in building the cities, uh, excuse me, building the cities' designated, under designated, non-balancing, in other words, your reserves, and to provide a mechanism to help meet, um, scheduled debt service and, uh, to, to do it. We, uh, think it's important that you hold the rate, at least for another year, and see what happens with the development, and we're anticipating to increase our property tax.
This is a public hearing, if anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against Resolution eighteen dash sixteen, now is your opportunity to come up. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any further discussion?
I don't really like any kind of a tax increase, but I don't think we have a choice in this matter at this point.
You and I are on the same page, sir.
Well, it will increase annually, I guess, residential by $58, but I, uh, if we okay this tonight, then we will still in August have our budget workshop, and maybe if each council person carefully goes through the budget, maybe we'll be able to find some areas where we can maybe save a little bit of money. We can't raise it, but we can lower it in August if we so desire, so, so I can support it now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, statuary eighteen dash eighteen, please.
Resolution number eighteen dash eighteen, by title only, for person only reading. A resolution, city of South Daytona, supporting the planning process to the five-year update of the Belushi County Multi Jurisdictional Local Mitigation Strategy Integrated Flood Plain Management Plan, providing for conflicting resolutions, providing for severalability, and providing an effective date.
Need a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Yarborough?
We get points, uh, we go forward a year, we get a writing. The writing helps us with our planning, sure. We adopt this, which is the same what we're doing anyway, it helps us, you know, freak out, which also helps us lower, because it's a higher, you know, anyway, what we're doing is housekeeping, it has, uh, no impact other than reflect what's currently happening.
Uh, question, uh, for John.
Yes.
For, when they lowered the flood stage elevations, the last map change, since the hurricane, has there been any scuttlebutt about?
No.
Them raising it?
This is maybe, is a thousand year event.
So they, so...
So they're just about the two feet high.
Okay.
So, but this also, when we go for grant money, this also allows us more points for that too, so.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, move to approve. Okay, so I haven't seen, I'm gonna read it.
We started off with the school board, if you remember, last spring, making a commitment... We started off with the school board, if you remember, last spring, making a commitment to fund fifty percent of our, each school resource officer's cost. This is before the school shooting, shooting in South Florida, and before the legislature mandated, gave not enough money from school districts that every school will have, uh, officer there. They made it designated, it could be a guardian, it could be a school resource officer. School resource officers cost more than guardians. School board said that, let's go with guardians in elementary school, middle school and high school, I have resource officers. Got it? They cost more. They're training more, they're usually a police officer. I don't want to get into all that detail because it doesn't really apply. Fact of the matter is, school board said, hey, look, one time we thought we were going to get a seventy-thirty split, but when they looked at the money they didn't have it, that's when they backed down to guardians, they said, can we go back to fifty-fifty? And that is the, about what, the thirty-eight thousand five hundred seven dollars that they're willing to pay us. The school resource officer has been in the school for the last two or three years under a grant. So this mitigates that grant, frees up that officer to work in patrol when school's not in session, and helps the school board meet their requirements for an officer in school. So the paying, we're putting in the school resource officer in there, and they pay us for a guardian.
Need a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
City attorney has advised me that because we added this item after my invite to the public to come up, um, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this added item, dealing with the school resource officer program in South Daytona Elementary, now is your opportunity. Please come forward. You'd like to speak for or against this item? Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
I, I think it's a good thing. It's a shame that we have to have so, so much security in our schools today, but it's a, it's necessary, so I think it's great if they can pay half, half of the, uh, amount, you know, fifty percent split, so that's, that'll help us out too.
And I've heard a lot of good things about the, uh, program. Uh, it's, it's been working well, so.
I, I think my time at the elementary school was, uh, was some of the best time I've spent during my last, uh, seven years working here, so I am, I'm firmly liberated. I'd like to see it continue, whether we need it or not. I think it's a good PR thing for the, for the kids. I get invites to graduation and other things from these kids that I met who do a good deal, so I like it, so.
With that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Number ten on the item on the agenda is unscheduled council member comments. Um, I know I normally start with the vice mayor, but this time we'll start with, uh, Councilman Shonda over there on the far left.
Great news about the rec and race board grant. I mean, we've been kicking that one down the road for years and years, and we were at the point where there's not much we could do if we had another failure. Um, so the parts are not available, so that's, that's great. And, uh, as far as the school resource officer is concerned, I'm, I'm thinking over the next year or so, a lot of things are going to shake out where school have better checks and balances and better, uh, follow-up on, um, checking these people out that have handguns and all the associated factors that go on with it, and maybe some mental health programs that come about, so I think everything together is going to work better, hopefully. So hopefully we don't have to do this permanently.
Legislature's going to do a better job of finding and do whatever required.
Yeah, it's, it's a sad, sad day, but hopefully it'll get better in the future.
Well, and also, I think it's good news that, um, South Daytona has moved up from a D to a C.
Absolutely.
You saw the latest rating. Um, naturally, we would like this, next year, hopefully, they'll move up even further, but I know when I was, uh, when I go to the school like to volunteer, um, the resource officer is, the kid, the children love him, and I think it's such a good rapport that I think probably is a factor in the, uh, school booming up because the children enjoy talking to him and maybe they enjoy coming to school more, so I, you know, I think it's a really good program.
Absolutely, that's incredible.
Okay, great, yeah.
I'll leave that there.
Also, I do have, um, an announcement to make tonight. Um, after thirteen years on council, I have decided to withdraw my name as a candidate for reelection. Doug Courtney and I have talked, and Doug is sitting right there. Doug is a good friend, and I highly respect him. Uh, when he was on the police force, he was immediately available to help when I called him about any resident concerns. I believe he loves South Daytona as much as I do, and will do his very best to serve the residents. I am a senior councilperson at this time. I have learned so much over the years. I represent the city at meetings for TPO boards, South Daytona, Portland Chamber, Belushi County School Advisory, and Florida Environmental and Energy Committee. I've encouraged neighborhood watch and citizen alert participation in my neighborhood, and I try to respond as soon as possible to every residential call or concern. I believe Doug will do the same. Finally, I ask Doug to be independent-minded and thoroughly research each agenda item he faces. This next year will bring some big changes as the city will choose a new city manager, a new police chief, and finally, new development projects. We need councilpersons who ask questions, seek transparency, and thoughtfully make decisions as to what is best for our city. It has been a wonderful experience to serve South Daytona, and I may be disappointing supporters who wanted me to run for this final term, but I feel Doug will be a strong and passionate councilman who will work very hard. I took care of my father for fifteen years, which kept me city-bound, and since his passing a year ago, I miss him tremendously, but I no longer have the daily responsibility of his care. After thirteen years of city service, I will be taking time to travel, mainly to Malaysia, where my son wants us to visit and get to know our two small grandchildren, ages one and three, whom we have only seen like two times. I will continue my fire club painting campaign, as my goal is to get every hybrid repainted, and anyone who wants to help is welcome. I hope you have noticed that, especially on Beville, we have some nice bright fire clubs. So, um, so now it's on to new adventures, and I feel I leave the city in good hands. My son has already booked our flights to Malaysia so we can go and spend time with the family. He leaves tomorrow, and then he will be picking up, uh, the family in Amsterdam, and then heading to Malaysia for a two-year assignment, so. Um, and so therefore, um, I just want to make this announcement. I wish Doug the best. I know he'll do a good job, um, and if he doesn't, I'll just run against him in four years, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Greg, I know you're excited.
Exactly.
You see Greg, and you let him know how much we appreciate him. I will. I don't know if I mentioned that earlier. Greg made the presentation this afternoon to the racing rec board, did a very good job. Called off the fifty thousand. I left before the vote was counted. Uh, there were five made it, and President Ronan, I know you were still there.
Right, yeah.
And we were fifth.
Yes. They actually squeaked out a little more money for South Daytona.
They only, they only had twenty-five left, so they threw in another twenty-five, I think, from the, from next winter's operation, so we were very lucky. So you see Greg, you know, he, he worked hard, huh?
Mayor, can I have another stab at it?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Uh, Nancy, I know that had to be a hard decision for you. And, uh, and then I want to congratulate Doug, look forward to working with him.
I've worked with him for a day or two since third grade, so. He can be hard-headed and stubborn. He's always, uh, Nancy, he's a great thinker.
And I enjoyed working with you, Nancy.
And we have a long talk, and I think, uh, I think we agree on a lot of certain areas, so I think Doug will do a great job.
And I certainly have enjoyed working with you. I mean, we're not done yet, but.
Actually, when, when is my last meeting?
December.
November. November, okay. And, uh, we may just let, do I have to be there, or is Doug going to take over?
That's in December.
December he takes over.
I believe.
No, November.
Election's on November the fourth, and then the sixth.
It's, yeah.
It is. Our meetings happen after that. You don't have to be here in November.
Okay, good, I'll be in Malaysia.
Please have a passport to come home.
I do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Andy, pretty work on the, uh, and, and I know that Patty, you did the application, or do you need, we wanted to get it. Thank you. And Andy, thank you for, for sir. I, for chief, for our first stab at it, that was, that was pretty cool to get two out of two recognized for chief, because they, they'd never heard of us before this year, so.
That's amazing.
Yeah, it is. It's, uh, it's awesome for sir and for the community trust. Chief, I had some folks stop by on the incident on citrus, they'd like to stop by when I'm mowing my grass for some reason, but there were some, many compliments on how our officers, um, handled themselves at one, so compliments to those to the officers. They, uh, feel concerned with the, with the incident on the family, so. And on that, leave you, Jerry.